The hour is upon us. If you would please rise if you're able to.
I am.
Please release.
I am.
United States of America, in the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, good evening. We have three councilors present tonight. Chair Cook is away for business, so we will get started. Any votes tonight will have to be unanimous in order to pass. We will start off with a roll call. We have three present.
Public hearing before they're.
Are we?
Yes, we are. I am sorry. All good for that. We will start off with the public here for the general assistance annual appendices updates.
Put down the bond with this, Tim.
Okay.
Hold while I get here. I'm just going to go on this way because we're going to get to it when we go to the motion. So the general assistance, every year the state adjusts the general assistant annual appendices, and it's purely bookkeeping for us to adopt what the state puts out. Is anybody? There we go. Thank you. The state published the updated bandits for general assistance. It's basically what I just said, so housekeeping item. Changes have been made pages one in the ordinance trauma informed services. Two, business hours and training. Eight landlord definition. Ten operator definition, twenty six maximum level of assistance assistance is defined. And sixty one noted for not exceeding maximum levels. There is no page eighty four. Appendix A is overall maximum for income have increased approximately three point five percent. And appendix B food maximums have increased approximately point five percent. Appendix C housing maximums have increased approximately three percent. Appendix D utility maximums have stayed the same. Appendix E heating fuel maximums have remained the same, taken by gallons not dollar amount. Appendix F personal care and household supplies have remained the same. Appendix G mileage rate, state of main travel expense reimbursement rate as set by the office of the state comptroller is fifty cents per mile. And appendix H burials and cremations have increased a hundred and forty five dollars for burials and a hundred dollars for creations. Twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three GA housing maximums for recovery residents have decreased by thirty six seventy five a month. So that's what we'll be taking action on later tonight. Do I have anybody in the public that would like to speak to this? Okay, hearing done. We will close the public hearing. Six thirty three. All right, moving on to town council business. Yes, take our roll call. We have three councilors present. We went to approval of the town council minutes from nine twenty four twenty twenty four.
Mr. Vice Chair, motion to approve the town council minutes from the meeting of nine twenty four one eight twenty four.
Second. A motion and a second. Is there any discussion on it? Nobody saw any corrections needed to be made? All right, hearing done. We'll take a vote. Jeff?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
I vote also aye also. Motion passes three zero. We will move on to the signing of the treasurer's warrant. I'll make that motion to sign the treasurer's warrant dated ten three twenty twenty four in the amount of one million, three hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and six dollars and forty six cents.
Second.
The motion and a second. This does include the school payment of eight hundred and three thousand, two hundred and thirty four dollars, which is why we're over the million mark. Any other discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second. Jeff?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
I vote aye also. Moving on from there. Reports and presentations. We have a report tonight from SMPDC. Reagan, I do believe you are presenting?
Yes.
Welcome.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for having me. Welcome. I am going to present this evening. We have a deck of slides. I believe Paul wanted to queue things up for you first, though, so I'm going to let him let him start. Thank you.
Sorry about that, Paul. I didn't mean to forget you.
That's quite all right. It's not the first time, not by you. So thanks. Yeah, I'm just going to queue it up for Reagan and then let her take it over.
I just got to say a little.
Thank you. So, yeah, we've been, as you know, we've been doing this for about two years now. That's when the plan first got underway. I think in the spring of twenty twenty two. And can we just go to the next slide? Okay, thank you. So there's been a, you know, a long effort. This is sort of the culmination of that effort. And there's a number of dates there, which actually I can't totally see with my without my better glasses on. But there's an overview there of the of the process to date, which included starting the inventory in the summer of twenty twenty two. We did a very robust community input survey, number responses, which Reagan can get into. We then started looking at focus. We had a number of focus group sessions. Thanks. We had a number of focus group sessions, which were really helpful, very insightful. We did that in the, I believe, in the, actually, that data is incorrect. It was, I believe, in the spring of twenty twenty three. In the fall of twenty twenty three, we entered into the goals, policies and strategies. And then in the winter, this winter of twenty twenty four, that should be, we completed the future land use section. And then we've obviously come to you guys for a few times. So we presented to you on the fourteenth. That's when you voted to send the plan to the state. August first, they came back with the finding of consistency, which was always is always good news. And they had, and Reagan can get into this, there were some recommended but not required revisions, which I think were passed around. And at that point, the, Tim and you folks asked SMPD to do a review of those remarks that the state had sent back, which Reagan can get into and which we did, or SMPD did. And now we're back to you for, hopefully, to schedule a public hearing, which which we can talk about. It's got to be posted for thirty days. It needs to be a joint public hearing of the public, of the council and the comprehensive planning committee. And then after that, it's it's up to you folks on how to move forward or on whether to adopt the plan. So that's sort of where we're at. Again, that was a, it's a two-year-long process, which in comp planning time is actually not bad at all, believe it or not. Some of them go on forever.
As I say, when we talked about this a few years back, it was looking to be quite the ordeal. It's impressive.
Yeah, I think the one in the early, well, I think it went on all through the early two thousands. Two years is actually not too bad.
I'm impressed with the effort.
Thanks. And and, you know, I think Ed Reagan could do that. I mean, I do want to thank the committee who was, and Jeff was part of that for a while, who was there for two years.
Yeah, you had a very, I wouldn't say totally unusual, because we work with a lot of great committees, but a very, you know, dedicated committee in the sense that there was a very core group that stayed there, you know, throughout the two years. You can go ahead to the next slide. The remaining slides that we have are really just an overview. There's all things that you've seen before, but I wanted to make sure that I came prepared with sort of a basic overview of the plan in case folks had more questions tonight about what it really includes in the process that we went through. So these are the sorts of things that we hope will be discussed at the public hearing and that folks will be aware of the fact that they are, you know, having a hearing on. So when the materials are posted online, we're hoping that this is all stuff that's very clear to folks and they know that that's what we're talking about. So the inventory, it's really based two basic pieces. Inventory, which is all of your data and analysis that covers lots of different topics, many of which are also topics that have been covered in other plans that South Berwick has been working on, right? And we tried to make sure that this plan was encompassing of all of those other efforts. And then part two, implementation, which covers your goals, policies and strategies, which is the fancy cop plan way of saying recommendations. Your future land use plan, which is very specific to your zoning ordinance and how the committee proposes your ordinance will look in the future. The implementation plan, how are we actually going to get all of that done? And a regional coordination section. Go ahead, Tanya. This is another sort of more detailed piece about the inventory goals, policies and strategies. All of the inventory chapters are listed there. You can also read them at your leisure in the nice, you know, very detailed document we provided. And the goals, policies and strategies as an overview, because that, you know, that terminology can be sort of jargon-y to folks. The goal is the overarching idea or vision. The policy is a little bit more specific about a method or initiative that you want to take. And then the strategies are those very specific actions that will happen step by step. So when we talk about implementation of the plan, those are the strategies that we intend the city, the town, to be checking off over time. The future land use plan goes into the growth areas, rural areas, critical rural areas. I talked a little bit more detailed when I presented the full plan to the council a while back about what the recommendations of that section are. But it's important to note that this is one of the more important pieces of the plan, often to your constituents as well as to the state. So the fact that the state read your future land use plan, had no comments on it, found it to be consistent with the state law is very good news. Next is just an overview for folks to remember the public engagement that we have done throughout the process and has brought us to this, you know, this stage. Very early on, we did a very successful community survey. It is very rare to get more than, I would say, two hundred, three hundred responses on a survey. And this one was very well, you know, represented of your community, both online and hard copy versions. Our focus groups were also well attended. We had four different focus groups with about ten to fifteen subject matter experts, folks from the community, as well as state agencies, regional agencies on specific topics. That actually really kicked off the recommendations portion of the plan and gave the committee a lot to work with for that part. And then earlier this year, we hosted a public information session where we went in. It was the most detailed overview of the plan that we've done so far, and it included slides about every chapter, as well as sort of the highlights of the recommendations of every chapter. And we did, you know, that was pretty well attended. We got about fifteen, twenty folks to come to that to make up for the folks who weren't able to come in person. There is also a recorded version of that public information session presentation where I sort of do like a talking narration of the presentation that is on your website as well. And then sort of after that process, we've had handouts and the map posted in the town hall. We've had different presentations with the planning board. So just to remind folks that this public hearing is not the first opportunity that the community has had to give feedback on the plan. And it's actually the last and should be sort of the final opportunity for the community to provide feedback. And so lastly, this slide is an overview of what has happened in between you voting to send the plan to the state for consistency review and the document that you see in front of you today. So along with their, yes, you are state consistent, they also sent along a few pages of recommendations for recommended revisions. And some of these were specific to our plan in that they thought, for instance, we didn't emphasize the importance of fisheries as a natural resource, because South Berwick actually has native wild brook trout in the community, and that is rare for Maine, especially southern Maine. So that was some, there were a couple of things like that that were a little bit, you know, missteps on our part in missing it in the inventory. But then a lot of the other recommendations are sort of generalized recommendations that they provide to communities. So one of them was a sheet of recommended zoning ordinance changes for natural resources protection. And to for those sorts of recommendations, we reviewed the plan that we had already written and found some of that we had addressed. One of the ways that we addressed that was by adding a sheet of those recommendations that they sent to the appendix and then referencing that sheet in one of your specific goals, policies and strategies that was already there that said, you know, adopt ordinances that protect natural resources. And it says, see, you know, this appendix for specific recommendations. So there were some ways, too, that we amended it where it didn't require a lot of narrative change. It was just adding in some of the recommendations that the state had provided. And I'm happy to answer any questions on those. I believe you were provided with a document where I went through all of the different recommendations and where the revisions are in the plan itself. So you could go into that in detail if you want. And then next steps, as Paul mentioned, you're really, really close to the finish line, which is very exciting. The public hearing is required by state law. The posting for thirty days before the public hearing applies both to the hearing itself as well as your draft plan. So both of those things need to be publicly available for thirty days. That's also written into the state law. So those two things are kind of unavoidable. At that point, the council then has the power to adopt the plan after you've held your public hearing. The public hearing should be a joint session of the council and the the comp plan committee. It's written in the language of the law that the planning group, basically, the group who did the planning, be the one to hold the public hearing. Because they're an ad hoc committee, we assume that a joint, you know, a joint session with the committee as well as the council who established the committee would suffice and check that box. I imagine there, you know, there, there is a scenario where there is some very strong feedback at this public hearing, right? And I think the committee and/or the council may want to have that discussion at some point. If there's something very specific that you feel strongly about amending, of course, you know, we want to take into account the fact that you've been found state consistent. And, you know, we don't want to be rolling back anything to at this point. And folks have had plenty of opportunities to oppose those, you know, propositions up till this point. But I think, you know, it's safe to say you're not, you haven't crossed any threshold that wouldn't allow you to to add to things. And that's what we have for this evening. So I'm happy to answer any questions and hope you guys move this forward.
Well, I have, I have one before I open it up to everybody else, and it's, it's an odd one. The information, again, that you provided prior to this, and this is fantastic and the work, we greatly appreciate it. The surveys that came back, do you have a breakdown? Because I just want to know how our town is on hard copy to.
Oh, yes. I think there was about six hundred hard copy responses, so it was just over half. And and don't, I mean, I think that's in the plan, the hard number somewhere, but it was, it was close to fifty fifty.
I'm just trying to judge what, what worked best.
Yeah.
Where we are as far as trying to get things out to the town, which works best, because I've heard it from, oh, I don't want to appear. I'm just really curious to see where, and that's interesting to see we ended up that close to.
Because, I mean, we probably would have gotten a great response without the hard copies, right? We would have been so thrilled with five hundred, but we would have got half of what we could have, right? Just fascinating.
It's worth the cost to send it out to for us in the future. It's worth the cost of sending out a survey if we're going to get another fifty percent if you will, surveys back and have to do paper.
Yeah.
So that's fantastic. Thank you.
That's a good point.
Any other questions from the council?
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to, you know, thank Reagan for her leadership during the meetings and who is, you know, really, really good attending the meetings for, especially at the beginning, trying to get a lot of the learning to the committee and my dolphin stuff and try and explain what we're really doing. And then just thank you for that. And thanks to the committee.
Yeah, big thanks to the committee. It's true. This is a much harder process if you do not have dedicated people. We can't do it by ourselves, so.
Again, it's impressive that you kept this together for two years, same people. That is, it's amazing. And it shows what the community wants, that they had that much buy-in. So definitely looking good for us. Nobody online? Beautiful. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. We'll look forward to seeing you soon at the public hearing.
Yes, yes.
Okay, moving on from that, we will go to public comment. Do we have any members in the audience that would like to discuss something not on the agenda? Do we have anybody online? All right, seeing none. We will get into unfinished business. First order of unfinished business is to schedule a public hearing for the comprehensive plan.
I just want to, I think I saw on here a date. I will be available. I will be here for the twelve. I'll be traveling for work. Not that that means anything. You'll have a new person on the council at that point and then review if I'm absent. So you should be all set for a form. I'm just not sure the new individual would be problematic in that vote or not. But they, as far as if they can vote or what, so.
They should, so it's just a public hearing. Shouldn't be any action.
Okay, clear.
They don't just be, you know, so even for that particular, you can zoom in if you're available to, if not, then, okay, and then the vote will come at the next formal council meeting after the public hearing.
I just solved the thing. I wanted to.
Nope, no, all good. And again, I'd rather talk about it here than figure it out later.
Right.
So with that, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Vice Chair, motion to schedule a public hearing with the comprehensive plan committee on the comprehensive plan with amended changes for Tuesday, November twelfth at six thirty PM on the third floor of the town hall.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing done, we'll go to a vote. Jeff?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
I vote aye also. Motion passes three zero. That closes out unfinished business. We'll go into new business one, which is the general assistance ordinance. I will make a motion on that barring anybody wanting to hear me reread all the information again. I don't see any new, thank you, issues. So I will make the motion to vote and adopt the MMA general assistance ordinances and the updated dependencies. Second. One second. Effective October one, twenty twenty four.
Three second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing done, we'll go to a vote. Melissa?
Yes.
Jeff?
Aye.
I vote aye also. Motion passes three zero. Moving down to our final new business. It'll take a second because it's on the way to the bottom. All right. I'll make a motion to vote approved the list of chosen election workers in the November fifth, twenty twenty four election. They are as follows. Republicans are Geraldine Hilton, Jane Leach, Angela Conley, Mike Conlon, Susan Bernier. Democrats are Bob Edgar, Arlen Goodwin, Dave Stansfield and Trish English. And the unenrolled are Henry Miller, Pat Waitman, Heidi Kilmer, Michael Kilmer, Stephen Shays Senior and Maria Shay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'd like to thank everybody for volunteering. Hearing done, other than that, we'll go to a vote. Melissa?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
I vote aye also. Motion passes three zero. That moves us out of the business. We are now going over to damage report. Tim, it's all yours. We are now going over to town end, just report Tim, it's all yours.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Chair, and looking members of council. I run into the empty room tonight, huh?
Yes.
Um, so you probably know that I've learned Spanish now, I'm going to give you my reports in Spanish. I wish. Uh, so the highway, they strained millions from World Drive after the, uh, created that we paved. Be used as reuse material around town. They paved Middle Street. Box sound dug down and added gravel and paved a portion of White Street was feeling soft. So they made sure that was taken care of. Uh, the town crew built a woodchip, need blocks for the, that fits on the back of the dump trucks for around fourteen hundred dollars instead of buying a new one for fourteen thousand. So they saved us a ton of money by being innovative. Police found at four arrests, five accidents, thirty-one traffic assaults. And we had to have the transmission replaced and all of them police crew. So it just failed, it just wouldn't do anything, it just sat there.
I have a recall of my brand new truck, I understand it right off the bat.
He was covered in the water.
Yeah, it was volatile and knew before did it and took great care of it the next day. They were very receptive, took it over and sold it back. Uh, code enforcement, we applied about fifteen calls in the last two weeks, nothing of any substantial. Um, three hundred and twenty-seven calls here today. Open houses, they have open house this week. It's fire prevention week, so they've been visiting the schools. And on Saturday, October twelfth, in ten to two, they'll be having an open house with free food. So public's invited and everyone should go, they'll have the smoke trailer up and be doing a variety of fire prevention events. Uh, code enforcement, the fire chief has been filling in for the code enforcement office, he's on a medical leave. Um, he did nine building permits, eighteen inspections and three violations. Um, our new planner, economic development director is here. Carol, you want to give your report?
He has that on occasion.
Trail by fire.
There you go.
By fire.
That's the way to do it.
Yeah.
He's done a great job and just, uh, we, two weeks he's been here, he's really hit the ground running. And I want to, uh, just want the council to know that he's really, he's become a already an added value asset for the team. And I think we're very lucky to have him.
Thank you, Tim. Um, a little bit on the spot, but you know, we, we do what we got to do. Um, so the downtown revitalization plan, the plan was sent to the main department of economic and community development on September twenty fifth. We're waiting for comments, um, or approvals, which will be returned this week. I got an email today, they're returning comments on this week. Either that'll be approval or things you have to change. Um, there's a bike pedestrian, um, plan. We're currently in discussions with CACS, which is the regional transportation, um, organization um, that we have to be a part of in order to get federal funding for transportation. Um, uh, to fund a bike and pedestrian plan for the town. The plan will connect our comprehensive plan, downtown revitalization, revitalization plan and our open space plan to give the town options for implementation related to walkability and transportation by bicycle. So we have all these plans.
Can you elaborate a little more on that?
Absolutely. So we have all these plans. We have our comp plan that's finishing up. Um, we have our downtown revitalization plan that's finishing up. Um, we also have an open space plan that is also finishing up. Um, that is, uh, you, you will have a, a, um, you know, a joint meeting on that, I believe. That's the beginning to be scheduled for sometime in either December or, uh, what have you. Um, but you need something to actually implement these plans. It's now time to stop talking about it and to do it. And so the question is, well, how exactly do you do this portion of it and walkability and bikeability? And so with that, um, taxes is saying this is, they're using their funds. We do have to do a small match as a part of that to, to basically tell us, hey, this is how you do it. This is, if you want connectivity in your town, you have these, um, these very public spaces. This is how you get from a point A to, uh, to point B by walking or by biking. And these are some of the improvements that you will, um, need to do if you wanted to have that. What we do with that is that we take those, um, recommendations and we put them before you again to see really, what do you want to do? What do you want to implement and when do you want to implement that? Um, because, you know, we have these plans, but when a rubber hits the road, they have to be funded somehow and they actually have to be implemented somehow. And then so, you know, we bring that to you on, okay, this might be a good idea. We get your feedback on, you give us a go ahead and then we execute. We're administrative body, we execute what you, you guys, uh, want to do.
So is this kind of a plan from them and you working together? So we'll actually see something concrete of, instead of us doing what we've done since I've sat here for ten years of talking about it.
Correct.
We'll actually have something that we can say laid out and then we can go from there.
Correct.
That's perfect.
Yeah.
That's, that's.
Yeah.
Great step forward.
Yeah. And so this is basically, you know, you've done all the legwork and going, okay, what do we have out there? You know, we have the hill, we have our fields and everything. Um, and so that plan will really bring it together going like, okay, here are some options for connecting those together. You know, or do we connect it by going down the street? Or do we do a, a different trail system somewhere else? And what are the, you know, maybe costs associated with each option, timelines associated with each option? And so we can really make an informed decision of what you, what you want to do going forward. Um, and so that's why you do a bike pedestrian, um, plan. And that's, that's the plan going forward with that one. Um, and then, um, just one more update is one application has been accepted for a sketch plan. It's in the process of being submitted for preliminary review. Very broad, but you know, that's where we are in that process. Um, so you have a bunch of plans and you've acted on one this evening. Um, so we are really looking forward to getting towards the implementation. And, you know, that we're done talking about it, now we're, we're ready to do it. Yeah, thank you.
Would you give an update on communication with the state DOT on the DOT project?
Yeah, absolutely. So, um, uh, the, uh, intersection project, um, uh, it's done in phases when you're working with M D O T because you're also working with, you know, um, with state funds and some federal funds that are associated with it. Um, that's going to be done in phases. The, the current phase that's, that's currently being activated is the design phase. So, um, when you're doing a project at this scope with the, with the state, you have planning and design and then implementation. You've done a planning study about the, um, the intersections. Um, now they're starting going to design, they're getting, um, a consultant in order to do that design. Um, and I believe, I think half a million dollars have been allocated by the state in order to do that, um, the design work. Um, and associated with that is not only the intersections, um, but possibly the, um, the space in between the intersections. So we actually are talking about, um, a lot of this corridor that we have right outside. Um, and then from there, then you have to go into the queue of, um, activation of, um, when you're actually going to build the intersections out and build everything. Um, and talking with the state, you know, they're never concrete about timelines and I'm very concrete as about timelines. And I was like, hey, you know, but, but give me a date, it's, give me a date. Um, so there's, there's a kickoff that's going to happen in February for the design phase. And, um, it's a great timing of having all our plans done because then they're, they're, um, taking that into account for, for their plans. Um, associated with that, we have been, um, just briefly talking about, um, a, uh, parking study about the downtown, just making sure that, um, our businesses and everyone, um, you know, when you're doing improvements in, in, in signals, you, you're going to lose one or two spots here or there. But we need to make sure that our businesses are going to be okay and our residents are going to be okay. Um, when that, when that happens about, you know, weight binding and how many parking spots do we have in this part of downtown? Is that sufficient? If it's not sufficient, what are our options to increase that parking? And so when we're talking about any type of, um, safety intersections and proven safety that we're also taking in mind, you know, keeping those parking spots for our businesses and for our residents. Um, so that's also ongoing, um, that communication. And we're making sure that that's a part of the discussion when they're talking about the design, that they're also talking about our parking spaces for our businesses and for our residents. And so I knew that that was going to be a concern, it's always a concern when you're doing anything about safety. But I'm making sure that that's going to be in place as well. Um, and so, yeah, that's where we are today. Um, you know, they do say, uh, uh, they give you a vague timeline. And I also want to caution people anytime I say this beforehand, because I've seen it go both ways. I've seen it go ahead of schedule and I've seen it being way blown out of schedule. Um, and, but they've said like a rough schedule of eating, starting any type of work would be like a, a three year timeline. Um, because have to work with, um, right of ways and, uh, making sure that, you know, you have the rights to that land in order to do those improvements on the street and intersections. And that takes a substantial amount of time. And so that was, that's what goes into that timeline there. So you have the design work, but also you have, um, the rights to the land and the street that you have to deal with. And any type of infrastructure improvements that you want to do at, at that time or have to do at that time. Because once you start digging things up, maybe you may, may see a pipe or something and it's rusted out as far as water or sewer is concerned, you have to fix it at that time or you're going to have to do it again sometime in the, in the future. And that's something that we want to, we want to make sure that, um, if we're interrupting people's lives, we're doing it once um, and not doing it over and over again. So, uh, on the spot again, but that's a brief overview of these things that wasn't prepared, but, um, you guys are okay? All right, thank you.
It's awesome. You're going to be busy.
Yes. Yes.
And again, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you, the founder.
At the transfer station, we're preparing for winter. And the highway through is putting in new lights, bringing brighter bulbs so that we can be more safe and have things more illuminated at the transfer station during the winter months. At the library, they are doing their third annual read to you bleed Halloween reading competition. And this is for all ages. The recreation department has scheduled the Halloween parade that is for Wednesday, the thirtieth. It'll start at the community center at five thirty, work your way to central school as they usually do, and then no trick or treating after that. The new indoor adult soccer program is going to be starting on November third with sessions running through March. These will take place at the Great Works School Gym on Sunday afternoon. Discounted tickets for the Maine Mariners and U N H hockey games on December thirty first and February seventh are available at the discounted price through the recreation department. Seniors Friday, October eleventh, there was a group of about fifty heading to Boston for lunch at the Chief Kip Factory and then going on the Charles River Folkers. And then on the sixteenth, there is someone coming from the F B I to discuss fraud and common red flags for seniors to be aware of. Assuming K R T is working on Earl's Road and recently sent out mailers for Agminicus Road, Cardinal Way, Gerald Drive, Heritage Drive, Junction Road, Knights Pond Road, Legacy Lane, McLean Drive, Pond Road, Portland Street, Tara Lane, Town Forest Road in Wardland. So we can expect to see a K R T group there soon. The clerk's office has been very, very busy. Uh, Tanya and her staff have sent out eight hundred absentee ballots already. And the deadline for those are October thirty first, um, for doing it online. Or she has the office open that Thursday till six P M, you can come in in person. And as a reminder, temporary signs are to not to be placed within thirty feet of another sign bearing the same, um, message. And we want to be respectful of other people's signs. And another message, dog licenses are going to be opening up on October fifteenth. And a new, um, requirement will be to upload a copy of your reviews to the government. And we have these orange vests that, uh, Tanya got that we will be using for the election. So if anybody has any questions, our staff will be clearly seen. I'm just going to talk real quick so the owl focuses, sorry. And we'll be able to use those for other different events in the future as well. Thank you, Tanya. In my area, I've had nine business meetings, thirty-one staff meetings in the last two weeks. We have eight foreclosure notices, if they are not paid for October twenty fourth, they'll be sent out. And the foreclosure date would be December fifth, if they don't pay within that timeframe. We do have a new payroll tax that's going to be starting in January, family paid medical leave act. It won't be available for staff to take until, I think it's May of twenty twenty-sixth, but they're going to start to collect, um, this coming January, so it will affect all of our staff. The resilience grants that I've been working on, with S N K D C on climate control, um, we're going to be holding a workshop on October twenty fourth. I've been working on this project since spring, but the department and I are going to work together during that workshop and see this to a conclusion. This is something that we can redo every three times over two years. If it opens up to someone who again has had a, if we get picked for this round, if we may be able to get picked for another round as well. So that we can do E V charging stations, we can do solar panels, we can do windows, anything that will help with climate control. So one of the things we'll focus on is possibly putting the money towards the innovation for this building. And, uh, FEMA, where we're still working on Powder House, they started working there on the electrical this week. They're redoing electrical all the way from the bottom to the top. And for mediation, we're putting last fifty feet on the top of the hill underground to ensure that those don't be taken out again. And, uh, my staff and I made up the field work of the audit and he will be finishing up and completing and presenting to the council in December.
Um, I've met with several citizens about taxes, um, concerned about their taxes. And again, um, most of the results are on the back of the, uh, the, the event last year where we had the, um, subsidy with the state paid for their increase in taxes and this year they haven't. You know, they have to pay that portion that wasn't paid last year, so. Yeah, I can take a double hit. Um, South Fork V F W post by fifty-seven forty-four with the two submitted Spirit of America has actually been chosen as the recipient this year of York County. Has been awarded the twenty twenty-four Spirit of America Foundation Award. The award ceremony will be on November twentieth at three thirty P M. It'll be at the York County Government Building located at one forty-nine Jordan Springs Road in Elfrid. And you can attend either via Zoom or in person.
Is that an additional award, Tim? In addition to us awarding them the Spirit of America award or?
So what we do that we hand out at our town meeting, that's, so we submit the nomination, right? And they send it back or certificate or plaque, that's the nomination. So we nominated them, that's what we hand out at town meeting. This is the actual award. They actually won the award.
Oh.
So of all the other submissions in York County, they deck V F Ws. So now they get awarded by county commissioners in York County. And it goes to them. So they, they'll receive the award in November and will recognize them in, at the town meeting next year.
Have we reached out to the V F W to?
I don't know that, Dawn just gave me that today. I, I don't know if we have reached out then.
She didn't mention.
So, uh, we will. So. Um, that's all I have. Paul, would you just defend a little bit of the one percent tax for family medical leave? So they have a little bit better understanding what it is.
So like most things with the state, if they have, don't have all the guidelines finalized yet. Um, so we're working with, um, that's our H R consultant to finalize those things. It is my understanding that we do have options of the employer taking that cost, employee taking that cost or a combination of half and half. Um, so that's something that we're going to do and it's boring, but it will have, be paid by someone starting January first. One percent, the rest salary.
So, yeah, this is just a, it's a, it comes to support pay for the family paid medical leave act. Listening to MMA, their concern is that once people start using it, that the one percent may not be enough to fund it, that it'll grow as time goes on. So we, we won't know that till as time moves on. So with that, um, that's all I have, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for town manager, assistant town manager and our economic development? Just to put them on the spot one more time. By all means.
Uh, yeah, and not to, to Carl on the, on the, I'll see it again. But, um, just for a little bit of clarification, you were saying, uh, that it's that main DOT is starting the planning, planning or engineering of it, right? How does that, um, hold in last, last meeting, we talked about the, what was it, lower main street, not the lower main street, the revitalization plan where we saw pictures of the, of the street and stuff with bump outs and things like that or safety and stuff. Does the state do that engineering or are they just doing a, you need a road, here's a road, here's a bike? Or do they finesse it with that stuff?
It's finessing. Um, so it's, it's like a combination of, uh, the things that they are really concerned with are exactly the intersections because those are, um, high impact areas of where the crashes are occurring. And so their, um, their first concern of the state is to, um, to make those intersections safer. Um, at the same time, they, um, they use that as an opportunity to basically improve other safety, um, aspects as such as, you know, um, if they know that this is a commercial area, then they're taking into account the bump outs and the wider sidewalks. Um, and so there's always the opportunity to increase that, um, at, at the same time. Um, it is a DOT led, um, project right now. Um, so we don't actually get input into it until, um, starting probably in February when the public, um, public spaces, uh, the public comment period really opens and we have a kickoff. Um, so it's, it's mainly DOT, um, DOT led at this point. Um, but I've seen the same ones that you have and you know, just came out. Um, but I've seen the same ones that you have and you know, just came out most recently with all the bump outs and everything. As it, it was already when they were talking about the center, uh, um, the intersection plan itself. So they are taking that into account when they're starting the design process. Um, it's, it's to be determined of how much of that. It's gonna get into the engineering or if they're gonna ask us for additional cost. And, and so that's why I'm starting those lines of communication now, um, so we understand what is gonna be covered by the state and then. What may be to be determined later on by our local municipal.
There you go. Beautiful. Uh, we will go to council member comments. Yeah.
I just wanted, um, again to, to thank the, um. Uh, comprehensive playing committee, uh, they really have been very diligent in working through, uh. A lot of, a lot of reading, a lot of work goes into it and they've been, uh, really good. Um. So thank you again for, uh, all of their participation and congratulations to the V F W. It's, uh, exciting news.
Thank you. Awesome.
I'm gonna channel my inner former councillor Seer from my councillor comments, who was always so good at. Keeping the town informed on, um, events and stuff that are occurring and we seem to have lost that with losing Jessica. Um, so I, just a reminder, there is a candidate's forum on October fifteenth at six thirty in the auditorium. Um, I highly recommend that, uh, people tune in to watch, come to it or watch the recording after. Um, it's very important to, uh, know the candidates and I think this would be a great opportunity, um, for the town to do so. Um, home for the holidays is gearing up and, um, last year was a huge hit with them making it all in one day. Um, they're still looking for people to participate in the parade. And I may or may not want to challenge the council to think about doing a float in this year's parade. Um, to participate, cause there is a special guest, uh, that's going to be leading the parade. So. Um, and then the other thing is on, um, November second, there is a hunter's brunch at the number eleven schoolhouse. Um, on Emery's Bridge Road from ten to noon. Uh, it's ten dollar donations that go to the restoration, um, of the building. And it's a great opportunity for the public to take a walk inside the building and see what's going on and. Uh, how the improvements that they're making for the community. And that's all I have.
Uh, I got nothing. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All favor. Beautiful. Thank you.